And the fact that the fact that you shared some instances where that may not have been happening is obviously of a concern. So what I will tell you is that I will have a conversation with Dr. Knappick. He's an overseas, especially at department, and I will make sure that we reach out to you tomorrow. Give you an update on what's going on and get to the bottom of how we can make sure that we're implementing this properly. I apologize.
Board responses?
Thank you for coming. I really appreciate it. Having sat in on IEP meetings as a teacher. They're very technical and very overwhelming, and I I appreciate you coming, not only on behalf of your own students, but on on behalf of other students and parents. So thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for coming here. I know it's Tuesday and I understand the challenges, especially. I want to make sure that, you know, we follow up and please include us in the email in the follow up. I want to be make sure we we're kind of, we know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down. Questions for Dr. Paramo, which is, do we have or could we create, along with Dr. Knappick and Special Ed Department, a sort of glossary or breakdown of the terminology in IEPs so that we can send those to parents? Or it's also something we can download online so people can better understand the language because it is unbelievable. I mean, educational jargon is bananas all the time, but especially when it's your kid and you're really trying to understand this important document. So I think that's something that either if we have it, let's share it, and if we don't, it'd be great to develop it.
We can work on that.
And also, oh, yeah, obviously translated. And also, do we does, and this would be a question for Special Ed. Is there a sort of set timeline for responses to parent emails, questions about some of the issues that Ms. Medina raised? Like, is it that we'll respond to you within the week? And I know that it's a crazy time of year. You said that too, but these are huge issues. So I'm interested to know from the department, like, what kind of timeline? And what kind of, yeah, what are the what are the timelines that are set for response to parents? To make sure that people are, even if it's something as simple as we will, we will respond to you by X date.
Usually between 24 and 48 hours of a response. And sometimes that response is, I'm going to need to look into it. I need a couple of days, but you'll get an initial response and it doesn't look like you've gotten that. So I will need to work on that.
Something that we've talked about in the past is, and I I know that this exists, is sort of the step by step for parents to see of like, okay, my my kiddo has an IEP, my kiddo has a 504, like, what now? What are the steps that I can expect from the district to sort of, just so that you know, if I haven't heard back in a couple of days, here's where I am in the process. I think that's something we really need to revisit because I know it exists. But making it, maybe it's something that we we automatically give to our parents when their child at the IEP meeting, whatever it is, just to sort of provide more information. Because it it sounds like part of the struggle is just not, the just not knowing part. So I know that Assistant Principal Tobin at Luther is fantastic and that I'm sure we'll be, I know that Dr. Prom will be following up with her as well. Ms. Cusio. I, that's amazing. So two, two follow up questions to that. So Ms. Cusio said for people who who are listening in, if we're heard, that there is a special education handbook on the district website. It has a glossary of terms. So my two questions are, is it translated? And is it something that would be possible to have printed out to give to parents when they go through their IEP? Or is it cost prohibitive? So these are things that should, we should easily be able to find out. But to echo Dr. Agakanian, keep us posted, keep us in the loop. And, you know, we appreciate your advocacy, not just for your sons, but also for for all of our families and all of our kids. It really does matter to us. Great, thank you. It is translated. Dr. Agakanian.
Madam Vice President, Ms. Casser, do we also have another glossary with all the terminology's period? Because even during the last board man, board meeting, remember? Some of us were like, what does this mean? I mean, even we don't know all these terminology. Is there something on the?
On the web.
It's on the website and and Mr. Cantwell and I are actually working on a, an up, a revision of it too, to add some more terminology. But it is on the website.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you. Okay, moving on to new or unfinished business. Going to move to three A approval of the unadded actuels for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year. Can I get a second or a motion and a second?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education approved the unaudited actual reports of the 2022, 2023 school year as presented.
Second.
Okay, so Dr. Agakanian made a motion. Miss Ponser Campar seconded. All board members in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? The motion passes three zero. Uh, now what do I say? Do I move on? I don't know. I'm working it out. All right, three B. I'm sorry. Adoption of resolution for adopting the GAN limit for fiscal years 2022, 2023, and 2023, 2024. Can I get a motion and a second?
Yeah, no, Mike, where's the resolution? Let me pull it up.
Oh, I can pull it up too.
It's okay. I think I should have. Yeah. Madam Vice President, I move that we adopt resolution for adopting the GAN limit for 2022, 2023, and 2023, 2024 fiscal years as presented.
Second.
Okay, all board members in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries three zero. Ms. Ponser Campar, and should I talk more slowly so that you read? Resolution. Hold on, let's see if I can get it.
Oh, I'm not on the internet. That's why.
She's not on the worldwide webs.
I brought the wrong computer.
I'll get it.
Too many computers.
Um.
Mr. Cantwell to the rescue yet again. I mean, I could just, you know, just improvise. Oh, boy. Did I read the flicker?
No, just, just the, yeah.
Read a resolution, guys. It's a, it's a maiden voyage here. Whereas in November of 1979, the California electorate did adopt proposition for commonly called the GAN amendment, which added Article 13B to the California Constitution. And whereas the provisions of the article establish maximum appropriation limitations, commonly called GAN limits for public agencies, including school districts. And whereas the district must establish a revised GAN limit for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year and a projected GAN limit for the 2023, 24 fiscal year in accordance with the provisions of Article 13B and applicable statutory law. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Burbank Unified School District does provide public notice that the attached calculations and documentation of the GAN limits for 2022, 23, and 2023, 24 fiscal years are made in accord with the applicable constitutional and statutory law. And be it further resolved that this board does hereby declare that the appropriations in the budget for the 2022, 23, and 2023, 24 fiscal years do not exceed the limitations imposed by Proposition 4. And be it further resolved that the superintendent provides copies of this resolution, along with the appropriate attachments to the interested citizens of this district.
Well, Red is like monster trucks.
Listen, I was a high school debater, so I could have read it much faster, but I chose not to.
Cool.
Red is from now.
All right, we're going to move on to three C fiscal services department analysis. Uh, may. Yeah. But does the presentation come before or after? Before, before, Ms. Cindy Q says before. What do you?
It's before.
It's before, everybody. When Steve knows all the rules so well.
We're on to item three in my presentation.
Yes, sir. We are on.
Do I sit over here?
Yes. You could just roll your chair directly there.
You need mine?
Signature.
Vice President Weisberg, board members, Superintendent Pramo, colleagues. This agenda I am this evening comes to you after about three months of work from the end of May to today, as we were analyzing and considering current staffing level in our fiscal services department. Before I dive into tonight's presentation, I just want to acknowledge and thank Karen Watlin, who was responsible for putting together the unaudited actuels. I also am thankful for Lena Sola, former Director of Fiscal Services, who came in over the summer to assist us. And really, every member of the fiscal services team was necessary for us to close the books successfully for this past year. So it was a tremendous amount of work, but going back to Karen, she was really serving in two roles over the past three months. Our fiscal director, Ally Lowe's, last day in the district was June 13th. And from June 13th until today, Karen has been wearing both hats. And so I am tremendously grateful for her service to the district, for her success in being able to close the books with our team. But it really is time for us to have her, only have to wear one hat, to have her return to her current role with the district as a fiscal and budget supervisor. And so that, in conjunction with, again, the transitions that we faced, really led us to to tonight's presentation on how we move forward as a department. And so I want to just begin by stating, you know, we have a number of peer districts that we look to to things like salary studies. When we sit down with CSA and we consider salary reallocation, like we did this past year as part of negotiations, we have a set grouping of districts that we traditionally look at. However, those districts have certain key factors and metrics comparable to us, but they don't necessarily have a few ones that I think were particularly necessary to analyze for the department. And that is being of a same size district. So the districts that we look to instead for this report are districts with enrollment within about 10 or 15% of our district. They also have very comparable, uh, comparable unduplicated counts. Remember, that's students who meet one of the following qualifiers, either being on free and reduced meals, free and reduced lunch, being a student who is an English learner, a student experiencing houselessness, or a student in the foster system. And so that, those two metrics, our enrollment and our unduplicated count are the two biggest drivers of our funding. And so I looked across the state at districts that were very comparable there and also that were unified districts. And so these are, we find, found four districts that have a very similar profile to us. Not necessarily all of them here in LA County, one of them is. But they have a similar number of overall school sites. And so when we're looking at a district's operations, these are really good peer districts to look to, to see how do they accomplish the necessary components of a fiscal department. So those districts were Conejo Valley and Simi Valley, which are both in Ventura County. Conejo Valley makes up the communities of Thousand Oaks, Newberry Park and Westlake Village, Livermore up in the Bay Area, and Walnut Valley Unified here in East County. So those were the four districts. We, of course, analyzed our own department. And so you'll see on this presentation the current staffing level and the FTE allocation. FTE stands for full time equivalent. And so the full time equivalent staff that we have at each of the various classifications in our department. In total, between fiscal services, purchasing, and payroll, we have 22.5 FTE. However, not all those positions are currently filled. And that's something that we're going to talk about in a moment. One of our challenges in the department is how frequently we are having vacancies and how difficult they are to fill. And so we currently have our department structured with purchasing as part of fiscal services. However, payroll is a separate department that reports directly to me. So I want to just give you a look at another one of those peer districts. I only selected one for the purpose of this presentation, but we looked very closely at all four. And so this is just an example. Conejo Unified, you can see the way they allocate their staff. And I think even just visually, before you start really diving into the individual positions, you're able to see a few things. One, fewer classifications. And so our list is much longer because we have differentiated far more positions, whereas other districts will, will have a fewer number of job descriptions and those people capable of doing more varied tasks. Generally, that's viewed as favorable by CSA because that means that your current employees, if they ever were looking at the possibility of a reduction in in FTE or in work hours, that they have other positions to which they can easily bump into or transition into. And so generally, again, favorable by CSA, and you can just see the operational efficiency of the district like Conejo with the fewer classifications. They also have fewer overall FTE. And so if we go to the next chart, uh, next page, you'll see a few ways that we can compare ourselves to the other districts. One is looking at overall full time equivalency analysis of the department. You look at us, this is the left chart on this slide. Payroll and purchasing, we have very comparable staffing levels. Each of the comparison districts have either three or four staff members in each of those two departments. We have three in purchasing and four in payroll. So again, you see us very much aligned overall staffing wise, number of staff committed to these departments, to our peer districts, but you see a significant outlier when looking at our FTE level compared to the peer districts and the fiscal services team. So I'm sure you've heard because it has been a real challenge that our staff in the department are feeling overworked because we have had so many vacancies. And so it's been very difficult for us to allocate work with those who remain. But when you actually look at the overall FTE analysis, you'll see that we have 50% more staff, more FTE in the department than all four other peer districts. And so that was something that really jumps out right now as we look at, you know, again, a comparison. Another thing that is, I think, obviously related and really important is the number of positions that are common, that entry level of salary for accounting positions. And so one thing I was looking at was positions that max out below $65,000. Burbank, again, 14.5 FTE compared to all four other districts combined are about the same as us individually. And actually, if we go back to the slide for Conejo, if we look at their staffing plan, the positions which top out below $65,000 all start at least at $50,000. So do you see that? Again, they're, they're starting pace 51. They only have a five step scale. So when they cap out at $62,000, $64,000, they get there pretty quickly because of the five steps. Again, if I have you follow with me back to our staffing plan, you'll see that not only do we have positions that cap out well below $60,000, but those positions also start much lower because we're on a six step schedule. And so whereas, again, Conejo didn't have a single position that pays under $50,000, we have quite a few that start off between the the kind of mid 40s to upper 40s, and then they cap out lower. Another thing that we looked at was the reality that in every other peer district and also most other districts, regardless of size, purchasing is not typically part of fiscal services. Purchasing in all four peer districts had a management level individual that oversaw the Department of Purchasing in combination with warehouse and where districts have reprographics. Reprographics is also part of that department. And so purchasing and warehouse go hand in hand together. Again, the the purchasing of items and then the proper inventorying or asset tagging being together as far as warehouse and purchasing. And so as we, as a district, are looking to expend the final dollars of our 2013 bond, as well as we have a few other facility funds, which have some large projects on the near horizon. Specifically, think about the Burbank High Pool, the track and field, the track and the football field replacements at both of our high schools, some really large projects that we have coming up. And we need to build out our internal capacity to complete the RFP process, to properly screen, that identify vendors for these large projects. And so, again, other districts have a higher compensated management level position that oversees purchasing and has that technical skill set. So I already mentioned this, but just to give you a little more information on the vacancy analysis. Again, the fiscal director, we've been vacant for three months. We recruited for the position twice, once during the month of July, a second time in the month of August. In July, we applied or we recruited in our typical venue, which is Edjoin, the online recruiter for school districts. We had three applications total, none of whom passed screening. In August, we ran the recruitment for a longer period of time and we expanded the recruitment beyond just Edjoin. We also went to the USC CBO listserv. So USC has a really high quality CBO, Chief Business Official Education Program. It's a year long graduate degree program or a graduate certificate program that I am an alumni of or alumnus of. And so I reached out to my network there, and we also advertised in Access Magazine with EdCal. So a longer recruitment, paid advertising in multiple locations, reaching out to our various groups, did yield a few more applications. However, none of them had school district experience. And so again, none of them actually advanced past the initial round of screening. And so at this point, regardless of the path forward, we believe it's very likely this position is going to remain vacant until January of '24. You know, the most optimistic scenario might be the person starts in mid-December, but realistically, we're looking at a vacancy that would go from, again, June 13th for a total of nearly seven months into 2024. And so because of that, I believe, as as an aside, it's critical that I move my own office down to the fiscal services and provide more direct support. As again, Karen returns to wearing only a single hat to be our budget supervisor, allowing me to provide direct oversight of the department. Part of that work is going to be to meet with each of the team members and shadow throughout the day each of their workloads so that I'm able to better understand the way that we are filling 14.5 FTE worth of work, whereas other districts are doing it with eight or nine. And so really trying to do a workload distribution analysis as well as improve our systems and processes that we know right now are very manual and therefore prone to the possibility of of human error as we input manually so many things. But continuing on with the the vacancy analysis. Purchasing, we have been down an individual in purchasing, at least one individual since December of '22. We've been unable to fill the third position in that team. Accounting technicians, two. We have four FTE, four positions in that classification. We currently have three vacant. At least one of the positions has been vacant. When HR provided me the report, they have been actively recruiting since September of '22. However, that active recruitment, the reason that it only started in '22 is because they had taken a bit of a break because of lack of candidates. We've actually had at least one vacancy dating back to at least a year earlier. So we've been shot, we've been down staff in the accounting technician level position for two years. So I've already mentioned some of the next steps. Internal leadership is going to involve me, again, being much more involved as as an acting interim director during this period of vacancy. I've I've mentioned the priority to conduct a complete departmental analysis of position assignments, workload, work distribution, and procedures. Also, working to improve morale. Right now, again, we have a number of really committed staff members, some of whom have been here more than 30 years. Their kids have gone through our district. They are certainly bought in and invested in Burbank. And knowing what's taken place over the past few months has been a hit to morale. But also just operating with so many vacancies over the past few years has also just meant, again, workload distribution has been been a challenge. And so working to improve morale, providing training to improve competencies of our staff as we look at that workload analysis are going to be key for the next two months. Finally, we just, again, closed the books officially with your vote a few minutes ago on the 22, 23 fiscal year. It is critical that we invest a very significant amount of time in our budget provision process. As a reminder, December 15th is the next time that you will see the budget at the first interim revision. And really, as we build toward the the formal revision, we will be doing a much more extensive revision process this year to help also help equip us to be able to negotiate with our our partners in BTA and CSA through this fall. So in addition to some of these changes internally, we also are, have a number of external consultants or groups that are assisting. Two of those are already been approved by the district. One is FICMAT. They will be on site October 23rd for two days. However, their work is going to begin in the next couple of weeks as they begin offsite work, collecting a number of receivables from us as they begin their analysis. Additionally, we have our external audit that's performed by Clifton Larson Allen each year. That audit also will come to the board in December. And so their work onsite and off is really over the next two months as well, September through November. I will be asking for the the board to give me the support, to be able to hire School Services of California to help us the next time we go out for recruitment. If I have a general positive feedback here today, then I'll bring forward a contract at our board meetings next week, September 21st. School Services, as a reminder, is the leading private consulting group that supports K-12 public ed in California specifically for the business and operation side of school districts. They specialize and do more CBO and senior management recruitments for school districts on the finance side than any other entity in the state. And so they have created a proposal to assist us with our Director of Fiscal Service recruitment and selection process this fall. So again, not asking for approval here today, but I want to alert you that the intent would be to bring it forward next week for approval. I'm going to keep going through because we're almost at the end, and I certainly look forward to your questions and engagement. So the next steps as far as you, the board, again, assuming that we have a general green light to move forward with this new staffing plan. There's a few things that will need to come to the board here next week. I just mentioned the School Services contract, but critically is going to be in addition of a new manager level position. This will be the Director of Purchasing, Reprographics, and Warehouse. So again, we will align ourselves to the industry practice with our peer districts of having purchasing being a separate department. Andrea Lamb and her team will report directly to this individual. And so again, we'll have our reprographic and warehouse team receiving a more focused level of support with someone who, again, has an exclusive area of responsibility around purchasing, warehousing, and reprographics. So we'd like to bring that job description to you next week, which, if the board were to approve, we would open a recruitment for that at the end of this month with an anticipated start date of someone being able to begin in November, which is critical to help us, again, line up the construction projects I've already mentioned that we would like to have queued and phased for summer of '24 construction season. We also are looking at having to make changes to the job description for the fiscal director. So again, as I just mentioned, if we pull purchasing out of fiscal, in order to do that, there has to be a step of actually changing that job description of that director because currently it is under that individual's purview. We also, after having gone through two unsuccessful recruitments, believe it's necessary to reallocate the director position. Reallocate is a term for adjusting the pay to a higher range. And that would be to align it with our IT director. And so it would be still within the current classified salary schedule. It'd only be to increase it. It's a 5% raise to to allocate it at the same range as our other classified director at that level, IT director. As far as recruitments go, I mentioned again, our desire to be able to move forward with a director of purchasing as well as the the timing for a director of fiscal services. The other element I'll mention on recruitment, because we've had three unsuccessful, or we have unsuccessful recruitments and been recruiting nonstop for more than a year for the accounting technician two position. And we have three vacancies currently. I will be asking the board's support to close one of those FTE, close one of those recruitments, and be able to open a new recruitment at a higher compensated position, the budget accounting technician. That job description is able to do all the things that the accounting technician two can do and more. And so it's going to help us with workload distribution with our other budget accounting technicians. And so we're confident we will have a better opportunity to fill the position and help with workload distribution. With that, I just want to conclude by saying that I have been working closely with Laura Baumann, CSA president, and this will be something that CSA will be very involved in. Anytime you're looking at workload distribution, working conditions, that's something that the union has a right and a, an appropriate responsibility to be involved in with district administration. I do anticipate that there will be more reports coming to the board in the coming months as we do that workload and FTE analysis for the department. I will share that I think that the end result is going to be working in conjunction with CSA, putting forward a recommendation to increase compensation for some of the positions in this department. As we just saw, our peer districts who are really at a much different level of as we just saw our peer districts who are um really at a uh much different level of compensation for their teams. Um, and so there will be um additional reports to the board in the months ahead. Um, and all this is being done, again, uh and will be done in cooperation with CSEA.
Thank you. No, I got questions. And I be speaking her, I have questions, face. Miss Ponsor Campar.
Thank you, Vice President. Wispurg. Um, okay. So on your, as you're thinking about um the roles on the fiscal services team, is the idea that eventually it would essentially collapse down to fewer kind of named roles? So it looks more like Conejo Unified and, you know, people would still specialize in things like uh attendance and fundraising or whatever it is, but their title would be the same so that there would be.
Yeah, it's a great question. In a vacuum, I think Conejo has a much um more efficient and appropriate staffing plan. Um, I think it'd be premature though for me to think that that plan would work in Burbank.
Yep.
Um, and so again, that would be really something that we'd be spending the next few months working with CSEA on analyzing. Um, I do think that the end result is likely that we get ourselves a little bit closer toward Conejo, but again, at this point, I don't know exactly what that will look like.
Yes. So just based on your experience, is it? What would you say is the reason that we're getting so you have pay pandemic? What's going on?
Yeah, uh that's a great question. So um, uh actually, let me ask clarifying for you. Are you saying specifically director or are you saying for all the positions?
Well, you said we were getting with the director and.
Yeah, yeah, I'll I'll start with director and I can also expand it to the the rest of the team. Um, so right now, the the labor market for um chief accountants in schools um is extremely bare. Um, it is a very much an employee-driven market right now. It's very favorable to one who has the skill set um has uh multitude of opportunity. Uh, again, we just talked with School Services last week. There were twenty-nine recruitments for director-level positions across the state last year. Um, when you look at our compensation level, we're right now around tenth. We're kind of top third. Um, and so we're not horrible with pay. Um, but if you think about someone who has the skill set and experience, they're already sitting in perhaps a smaller-sized district and looking for that promotional opportunity. Our pay is so comparable to that kind of mid-tier uh of pay that it it's not necessarily motivating someone to leave. You overlay that.
Usually, what is the job requirement? Does CPA have to be CPAs or account?
Um, CPA preferred, but it does not require CPA. Um, so it's a bachelor um or the equivalent workload experience necessary for uh for the position. So.
Do we have the option of hiring outside entities as subcontractors?
There are districts that during periods of vacancy would hire consultant. Um, yeah, that that's an option that we could explore. Um, right now, I think that, again, that we have the internal competency and skill set to be able to get through this period. Um, but if we were looking at an extended period of vacancy, then having an interim from a retiree or other outside um consultant would make a lot of sense.
All right. I didn't want to cut you off.
You know, I I think so, again, the the labor market force, uh because if you have the skill set to do this job, you probably have a skill set to make double in the private sector. Um, if you are able to be at controller level um uh of an entity that has a quarter-billion-dollar um annual budget, um then again, you likely are able to to command a much higher pay. And so you really are needing to find people who are driven not by by compensation, but rather by uh by mission and purpose. And so um it's a challenge finding uh qualified candidates, especially when our pay is, again, right kind of in that same mid-level tier. I think that those who are in the know in this region are aware of what we've gone through the past few months and know that FICMAT is on the horizon. Um, I see FICMAT as a a um excellent partner for us to help us identify, again, ways that we can improve as a district. So I'm hopeful that the right person will see this as a really a roadmap toward improvement. And so it's uh it's not the same type of FICMAT involvement that other districts have when they're at risk of insolvency. Um, however, again, for the outsider who's hearing FICMAT is coming into the district, that may also be something that is uh affecting uh individuals' interest. We also just outside of the typical recruitment season, normally for, again, uh management, director level, uh cabinet-level positions in districts, you really are looking at spring. Um, and if not spring, the secondary timing is really closer toward uh December thirty-first because on the classified side, um December thirty-one is a more common time for uh for uh retirements because of the way PERS calculates your pension. Um, and so being early, you know, right as we were trying to close the books, anyone else who's qualified is so inundated focusing, closing the books also, this was not the best time to be uh going out to recruitment. So multiple factors. Um, as far as the other positions, I think it really goes back to, again, what we're looking at of when we are offering pay of forty thousand dollars a year starting. Um, and again, that the the private sector would be paying over sixty thousand for entry-level accountant positions and that peer districts are um paying, you know, fifty to fifty-five. Um, and we know we have challenges on the health insurance side as well. I think it really is just a matter of our our pay is not uh sufficiently competitive to um to invite applicants.
Oh, my my right shirt, right?
Yeah.
I think at one point, I would like to see as to budget to see if we're not filling this position, how much can we afford to bump some of these salaries and see if some of this position, if we get a better or not? Because I do agree with you, there's a big shortage of these positions. Um, I experienced um one last year, couldn't find any. Oh, so maybe at one point, if we're not seeing, uh, you know, people applying as part of it being the pay, as you said, maybe try to see if we have comparable budget to increase some of these positions, others to see. Like the turnaround is maybe, you know. Maybe that will help. Besides being the greatest district, everyone should try to work here.
Great.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, a- and to that point, actually, just the director position alone, each month it's vacant, we save about twenty thousand dollars. Um, so again, going from uh June thirteenth until um likely end of December or into January, that means, again, about hundred and twenty thousand dollars in savings um just from that single position. That's before we look at the purchasing vacancies that we've experienced for those accounting. Um, so we certainly do find savings there.
Um, some of these titles are not ones that I have heard of in in terms of like standard accounting titles. Like I know working with our accountants, like they're very used to like, you're a clerk, then you're a staff accountant, then you're a senior accountant, then you're a system controller, then you're a control. Like they, at least in the private sector, like it's a very clear ladder. Um, and so I also wonder for some of the more accounting-type roles, if if doing some of that, I don't know if like it's a marketing essentially move to do a change in title um to realign it with kind of what is more standard practice within the accounting world. I think the other piece, um, I know we've had, uh, it's, you can successfully recruit for teachers on Ed Join. I don't know that you can successfully recruit necessarily for folks that are more on the business side. Um, unless they're actively looking, right? Um, so I I just think that's something to think about is like, how aggressive do we want to get on something like a LinkedIn um in terms of looking for folks that have maybe some of the right background? Um, and this would be, you know, a stretch for them, but um that we, like, I'm confident in your ability to develop someone into into this role. Um, if only so that you don't have to continue to do it forever. So just some thoughts.
Thank you. Uh, hit the nail on the head. When we met with um School Services, the first thing they shared with us is that when we go out again, that we need to be advertising this entirely differently than we have been. And it needs to be marketed differently, and we need to be hitting other sources uh in order to to gain candidates. And LinkedIn was one of the ones that they wanted to have pretty.
And we've, we've been talking about it a long time about diversifying the way that we recruit. Because, again, like like uh Miss Ponsor Campar was saying, outside of teachers, Ed Join can't be the full stop base. So I think it's really important that, not just for these positions, but for any position that's not directly in a classroom, we're we're really thinking. And I I know we have the right people in HR to be thinking creatively about this. How are we, not only marketing, but where are we even posting? Like, on a very basic level.
Yeah, and I think, again, personal experience, these titles, the all these programs, the algorithm will not recognize, right? Their titles, if I'm looking for accounting jobs, the titles we have, if I put it in, ain't gonna pop up. Unless you're really inside of that, a very niche level. So maybe we'll look at these titles. I mean, is it, is it district policy or is it state mandated for these titles? Or have we just created these titles in the past?
It's district. So um Livermore, again, the district in the Bay, that was our peer. They have three positions and they look like what you would typically see in other uh um, again, corporate structures as well. So the fact that we have nine different classifications and many of which are, yeah, are a bit obtuse um is completely locally driven.
Can we revisit this maybe then try and see if we can change it?
Well, I I also.
It's still in conjunction with CSEA, but absolutely, it's something that the next few months are going to be spent.
Yeah, I think we, once we get additional reports back, I think we can have a conversation about. Um, you know, and I know both you and Miss Ponsor Campar have a lot of experience in this area. So we we should continue to have the conversation or the conversation could be, we keep the titles the same, but we make sure to embed language in the job job description that will pop up when someone's looking for X, Y and Z. So, yeah, I I mean, it sounds like we're going to be having.
That's right.
I say we'll save you time when it comes to interviews, you know, interviewing people are technically are not qualified. Again, personal experience. First one was going to do an accounting job, didn't even have certification. We're like, he said, well, it didn't say in your job. We're like, well, we have, we needed, which is true. But again, I think it also saves them because interview also takes a long time.
It does.
I just said to a panel for like eight hours.
I have some questions. Um, okay, so just to clarify, our union partners have been involved from jump. This sort of reimagining is not going to force anybody out of a job, so no one's losing their job. And um the current staff has been sort of involved and informed, so they're not going to listen to this tonight and be like, what?
Uh, I gave this complete presentation and a bit more commentary on Friday to the the team. So they they received it before it became a public document.
Thank you for that. Um, one of my questions you answered about how it impacts our print center. Has there been any um thought or discussion about sitting down with um the amazing staff members in our print center in the warehouse um and asking them about sort of what they think we need to have in this, these new positions that we're bringing on?
Um, no, that's a a great, great recommendation. So um certainly spoke with Andrea last week, and she was also one of the individuals that we met with um before any um uh presentations were complete, much less um public. Um, but actually seeing out the rest of the teams, something's not been done yet, and I think that's a great, great point.
I think it could be really valuable.
Absolutely.
Um, my last question is, somebody could be listening to this saying, well, we're talking about the fact that we've we've had all of these people, we've got, we have so many more people than these other districts, and everybody's drowning under the work, which we know is true because we know how phenomenal our departments are who are doing this work. So how does reducing the number of positions help us? How, I mean, can you, in layman's terms, how do we explain that to people? And so it doesn't look like we're just sort of slashing positions and hoping for the best.
Yeah. Um, so again, I think that there's really actually three key pieces here. Um, first is it's a little bit of a tangent to your direct, to directly answer your question, but it's the analysis that we're doing over the the coming months is also going to be improving processes that, again, are are very old, uh very labor-intensive, very manual. And uh again, not only do those create the possibility for error, but they also just are extremely time-consuming. Uh, as an example, uh when I was with San Barbara County Education Office um in a very similar role, um if I wanted to make a change to our budget, which, again, it was a um, it was not a dissimilar overall size of a budget. If I want to make a change to the budget, um easily could be done in two days and perhaps sooner. Uh, with our district, it's really, really difficult to make any substantive changes in less than four weeks. Um, and so that's why, actually, when we bring first interim to you in December, state law says we're supposed to be doing that with the expenditures as of October thirty-one. And so they give you a forty-five-day window from October thirty-one actuals to then create a budget revision. Our district's historic practice has been to not look at anything in October and actually to cut off expenditures on September thirtieth. So obviously, that reduces accuracy if you're not looking at actuals for as long of a period as you can, but it was just a necessary component to be able to complete this process. We did the same thing with our second interim. It's supposed to be expenditures through January thirty-one, what's brought in March. We were cutting it off on December thirty-one. And so, again, I I think that really a key component here is that we have uh antiquated systems that need to be improved. Uh, we also, because of the vacancies, have not been able to be the most strategic in thinking about overall workload distribution. Um, because if you have one person who's out and you have eight people who are here, if each of them take ten percent, it actually feels a bit more manageable. But if you only are giving it to two people and they're each taking half, it's completely overwhelming. And then if three months later, you have to do the same thing with a different person, then all of a sudden, by the end of the year, you've got every person who's taken on fifty percent of another job assignment for an extended period of time. It it really has been challenging. And so um I think that being able to take a step back and really look at our overall staffing load and look at the workload between those those positions is going to help us be a little more strategic, knowing that we are not going to fill all these vacancies um or the challenges that we've had at least historically filling them. So it's going to be a little bit more of a strategic uh allocation of of workload rather than reactive to when we have the vacancy. Um, and I think the third component is the reality that when you hire at a a um higher compensated position with a job description that has a a higher um uh um experience level and skill set required, that you're going to have people who are able to um uh assist the current team more successfully than some of the employees that we've had in the past, and particularly those who we've had to release from probation because they really didn't have the the skill set we were looking for. So increased pay and diversified job description allows us to have uh um highly qualified individuals who can really um complete the task more efficiently.
Thank you. Uh, last question is in regards to FICMAT, because we're going to get back from them. We hope some really like helpful recommendations for procedures and how we can sort of, I don't know, improve, modernize, streamline, all the lingo. How is that timeline-wise going to um? As far as these positions, the creation of them, the changing of things, how is that going to move like? In the same, I can't.
Yeah, in cooperation and conjunction, yeah.
That's better.
So um again, FICMAT will be here October twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Their goal is to have a report to us about six to eight weeks later, but given the holidays and that timing, you know, does that mean it'll be mid-December or early January? And that's kind of what we're looking at. Um, and so it's going to coincide, again, as we're looking at the overall staffing plan, as we're recruiting for the the two positions that we're seeking, um the work that they'll be doing. And and FICMAT will provide us a report again in December or early January, but they'll be giving us feedback all along the way. That's how this sort of consulting arrangement works is that they'll, they will not withhold from us useful information because they're waiting for a big reveal uh with the file report. They will help us um immediately. And so they'll they'll be a partner in this process.
So we don't anticipate, they're not going to come back with something that's in direct.
Completely undo everything you just said, yeah. No, no, that wouldn't happen.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you so much. This is really helpful. Thanks to everybody for putting this together.
Excellent. Thank you.
Uh, can I have a motion?
And I'm uh, I'm sure. My Vice President, I move that the Board of Education moves the recommendation changes to the Department of Unified School District, Fiscal Service Department in order to help address and modify vacant positions and prepare for the upcoming.
Second, all those in favor? Say aye. Aye?
Aye.
As opposed, motion passes three zero. Uh, we're moving on to item four, request to address the board. Seeing none, don't jinx it. Um, I will, uh, let's see, I will move to adjourn at six fifty-nine P M.